Sorry for the slight delay. We had a lot to do and we got it completed, so yay. I'd like Kelly to do a workup, please.
Ms. Hewer? Ms. Patchen?
Here.
Mr. Rukowski?
Here.
Mr. Sang?
Here.
Mr. Saab?
One, two.
Ms. Gabston?
Here.
Mr. White?
Present. Bill, I apologize. I thought I was going back. I am sorry, Bill. Alright, so we have two workshops. The first workshop is the Police Academy with Joan Christine Galvo. Would you like to come up? Welcome back. I'm in Philadelphia, I know, sorry.
I am not back. Thank you for giving us this time. My name is Christine Galvo. I'm a member of the Beacon Recreation Committee. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Beacon Youth Police Academy. The Second Annual Beacon Youth Police Academy was held last, well, two weeks ago here in the city. The goals of this youth police academy are to reach out to young people in our community and introduce them to law enforcement, including roles and responsibilities of police officers, the many facets of our local criminal justice system, and the multitude of career opportunities available in these fields. This year's program included eighteen motivated young men and women aged fourteen through seventeen, late middle school through high school level. The program was again led by an amazing team: my husband, retired police officer Joe Galvo, and Beacon City Police Detective Jason Johnson, who couldn't be here tonight due to an illness. The youngsters in the program learned about the process to follow to pursue a job in law enforcement and took sample police tests. Current and past police and officers shared their career histories. Physical training was presented by Officer Joe Conti from the Beacon Police Department. Students toured the Duchess County Jail and learned about careers in corrections. Sergeant Alan Castro from the Beacon Police Department joined us at Beacon High School for an afternoon K-9 demonstration, followed by basic police skills such as handcuffing. Wednesday was a day in New York City, starting at the Office of Emergency Management in Brooklyn and ending with an exciting afternoon at the New York City Police Academy of Queens. At the NYPD Academy, students did physical training, participated in a police scenario, and toured the mock courts, precincts, and much more. On Thursday, we joined Court Officer Joel Ramos, who's here tonight, a Beacon resident at his job in the New York City Court. We watched Criminal Court in Session, and we were able to ask specific questions and meet judges, district attorneys, public defenders, probation officers, and state troopers. We then had the pleasure of visiting with some of Beacon's own: Judge Timothy Pagonis and our Beacon Court officers. Our police chief Doug Solomon spoke with the group and toured the police and court facilities. We ended our week on Friday with a trip to the Professional Paladin Training Facility in Carmel. Thanks to the generosity of Mark Boundlab, we were able to experience room entry clearing training as well as scenario-based shoot and no-shoot training on a simulator. And we cooled off in the Beacon High School pool and enjoyed pizza, thanks to the mayor's office. So we're here tonight just to acknowledge all of the individuals and organizations who came together to support this program. That would include the Recreation Department, the Beacon City School District, the Beacon Police Department, the Beacon PBA, the mayor, the city council, and many more. Most of all, we appreciate the young men and women who attended and poured themselves into this program. On the last day, it was wonderful to hear so many students asking, "What about next year? Can I come again, and when will it be?" This program is an example of what makes our little city great: people coming together to help support and mentor others. So we're here tonight to express our thanks to the Beacon City School District for the support that we've received from you. We'd like to share a photo montage that we put together, and then we have Sue Serino here, state senator, who would like to give some certificates out to some students. We'd like to invite up Senator Serino. And the students, we're able to actually draw five students tonight out of the team. Many of them had sports and were on vacation. We also did a presentation last Monday at the City Council meeting.
Thank you very much, everyone. I'm always so amazed when young people take on these kind of challenges, and what a great experience. And thank you to the Beacon School District and to our law enforcement for encouraging our youth to get involved and do this. And I feel like when you're in leadership, it's our responsibility to award you and to say thank you, to encourage you, to get more people involved, too. So I have some certificates. Victorian Alpha? Ms. Valen?
No, Serino?
Christine, thank you for affording me with a few moments to speak to the children. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Alright, our second workshop is the City of Beacon After School Program named Smith and Mark Price.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Price and I'm the director of the City of Beacon. And we're here tonight to give you guys sort of an overview of this coming September's after-school program in three-year schools. So we're super excited, absolutely excited about the possibility. We're hoping to add a little bit to every kid's, you know, school day, you know? And we're the rep partners, so we're gonna make it fun. So that's our goal. We started registration just recently, and, you know, it's going well. So with that, I'll give you Nate Smith. He's been doing all the heavy lifting on this, so he's gonna sort of give you an overview of where we're at today. We look forward to being the partners on this, and thank you guys for giving us this opportunity to give it a whirl.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna do a PowerPoint if you wanna resettle. So yeah, Nate Smith with the City of Beacon Recreation. We're really excited to be here today and being able to tell you more about the wonderful things that we have planned for our kids in the after-school hours. Every single day that the school is in Session will be open as well. So from the moment the kids are dismissed, they'll be heading over to the gym until six o'clock, when everyone goes home. Every single day, they have about half an hour in the gym or outside, depending on the weather, for some free play. They've been in school all day, so they should have that opportunity to get out, blow some steam, have some fun. We follow by a snack, then by two activity periods, with a little bit of an adjustment period between the two, and then everyone goes home by six. Pretty simple schedule, except that it's not. Every single day, the kids will have a couple of options to pick from. There'll be the specialty, which is the advertised thing, so if you have seen the sign-up forms, there's a variety of activities. So the family might sign up for yoga, or for the drama improv class, or whatever the case may be. And there's also an alternative program, because there's gonna be some kids, like my daughter, who'll be there every single day. And maybe they're there and they're really into the activity, or they're not. They might want an alternative, and you'll have some kids who are there specifically for the thing that we're providing on that given day. The club activity is that alternative. It'll be provided by the after-school staff who's there every day. There'll be three people. Some of the attendances warrant that number of people who are there every single day, so the kids will have that familiarity with staff who are there every single day. And we have been in contact with, I forget the gentleman's name, who does the honor society, to get high school volunteers to come to the after-school program to get some volunteer hours and act as tutors. So they'll be helping the kids with the homework help. The homework help is simply an opportunity for the kids to come and do some homework. We're not gonna make them. Specialty activities, I mentioned a few: drama performing arts, we have an improv class, get some theater, some writing. They're gonna make their own scripts and act them out. We've got some classic arts and crafts with some popsicle sticks. We're also doing some fine arts, where they're gonna have the opportunity to do portraits and things of that nature. Speaking of nature, the Audubon Society is coming to do their For the Birds program from the Audubon Society down in Cold Spring. I think I'm making Garrison, I forget where it is, like, on the line. Hudson Valley Seed is also continuing the wonderful work they do in the schools already. I know, as I understand it, the kindergartners and first graders get to do Hudson Valley Seed. Well, in this way, they're able to work with the kids as they get older via the after-school program. Cooking, as well as baking, when we did our survey, it was the number one, the two most popular activities requested was karate, which we're working on, and cooking was the other one. So we've got cooking, so we're working on karate. Something of note, and I've gotten a lot of questions from parents, is that every school will have every activity over the course of the school year. The Audubon Society, due to their other, to use them as an example, due to their other commitments, they're only able to work in two schools in the first activity block, but will be coming back at a later date, so that every school has an opportunity to work with them and have that really great for the first program. Pricing, everyone loves a good pricing. There's four sessions per year, as you're probably well aware. It's forty weeks to a school year, so we cut it up into quarters. It's 125 per class per session, meaning if you signed up for yoga, it's 125 for every single Monday. Six hundred dollars for a Monday to Friday, it's a slight discount there. Males have discounts for siblings. If you were to do the math that I have, it works out to about five bucks an hour for childcare, give or take a little bit, which I think is pretty fair. If you can find me a babysitter that takes five bucks an hour, please send them my way. So some FAQ's that we keep getting, so just so everybody knows and has heard this information at least once: children must be enrolled in the elementary school in order to attend the program at that school. So those who go to private schools or homeschools, at this time, we're not able to take them, but we are open to the possibility that maybe in the future they might. But for our first out-of-the-gate session, not yet. Children must be signed up by an adult. I know that walkers happen in fourth and fifth grade, but we're a little bit nervous about sending to get home in the dark in December, so either grown-ups come sign them out. And financial assistance is a work in progress. We have been in contact with the parent-teacher associations and organizations to set up some financial assistance. I can't give you more details, 'cause work in progress. And thank you. This program is possible because of you guys, PTO, PTA's, the, you guys, Miss Porteroni thing. The Beacon City Council and members of the community. Thank you all for speaking up and saying how much this program I need to. I'm really happy to be here, and very proud to have the opportunity to make this happen for our community. And certainly, last but not least, register now! Spaces are limited. We are, like I said, working with thirty to forty kids per day, per school, and it sounds like a lot, but it's probably not. If anybody has any questions, that's my email address and direct office phone line, so please feel free to barrage me with phone calls and emails. Anybody have any questions?
So where can people go to find the information? Is it on the City of Beacon page?
Yeah, on the Recreation page. You can download the registration form. It's a four-page document. The first page, the first two pages are the information about the program and what the offerings are at the various schools on the various days.
For, I know that the financial assistance is a work in progress, but if people have suggestions about where, you know, how to get more financial assistance, do they just contact you?
Yeah, I can definitely be the point of contact, and then I can disseminate that information to the PTA, PTOs, and any other organization who have a few that might be interested in scholarships and such, and getting the parents in contact with them.
Where are you doing the cooking and baking?
Well, it's gonna be at every, what do you mean?
Where, what location is it gonna be?
So it's all three schools. So it's gonna be, I don't remember off the top of my head, but just to make things up and someone correct me if I'm wrong, it's like, I think it's like Tuesday at Sargent, Wednesday at South, and Thursday at Forest.
I just didn't know they had the facilities for that.
Well, we're hoping to make some magic happen.
Good, okay.
Anybody? Yes, sir?
What kind of supervision do the children have, and how are the people who are supervising vetted?
As per OCFS, Office of Child and Family Safety, it's gonna be a registered program. We're currently in contact with that state office to get all the paperwork in order. Everyone has to have their full criminal background check and fingerprints, as well as a medical pass, to make sure they're physically well and don't have TB, specifically TB test, as well as our own interview process, where we want people to be really enthusiastic and prepared to make awesome happen.
Are you, so is your programming set for this year, or you might change for the year before?
No. We have the first quarter set, that people are registering, and that part's awesome. And I have, I would say, about thirty to forty percent of the rest of the year, where, like, I know Audubon's coming back, and yoga's booked through for Mondays and things like that, but I definitely am still looking for other organizations or individuals who'd be interested in participating as a consultant, or as an activity leader, however you wanna raise that position. But yeah, we're definitely looking for more people. I mean, one of the things that's really amazing for me is that this community is so amazingly talented and wonderful, like, you can't throw a rock without giving me a really amazing, wonderful person, not that we should be throwing rocks, but... So like, it's really been great to start working with our community, to see all of these wonderful people step ups and step forward, say, "This is something I'd like to do, this is how I'd like to do it, how can we make that work?" And one of the things that I really love working with Mark and the Recreation Department has been that we're looking to find our yes. How do we make these things happen? How do we make these opportunities happen? How do we make music happen, et cetera? Beacon Music Factory, they're maybe gonna come in the next group, and that would be fantastic. We're not set yet, but we're looking, really open to whatever wonderful opportunities might be out there.
There has been some communication about scholarships and the financial assistance that has been a great concern. There has been a group of parents who are really interested in bringing the program out. They actually voted for the program, and they're concerned that they may not be able to afford the program. So knowing sooner than later about the financial assistance would be great. So how soon do you think that information can be given out to the community as the school year starts?
Like I said, we're working on it as best we can. And the other thing that I've noticed, none of those families have reached out to me yet. And so I would love to speak with them about whatever the situation might be, so we can start to work with those families. I mean, part of it is, I can't address a need that I hasn't been, that I haven't verbalized to me in some form or another. So by all means, have those families, or a group of families, if they have some sort of committee or whatever, I'm happy to meet with them, speak with them, as well as the PTA, PTOs, and see how we can make something happen for them. Thank you. Absolutely.
I just wanted to add as well, you know, in kind of consideration of building the program, we built it in such a way that, you know, you can sign up for individuals, individual days, primarily because it allowed us to sort of give some diversity to the program, but it also allowed people to sort of hopefully, you know, be able to afford the program in its current state. You know, they may not be able to go to five days, but you may be able to afford one day or two days or three days, obviously not taking care of everyone's daycare needs or aftercare needs, but it also, it's a recreation program, so our hope was, you know, to at least, you know, provide it at different levels, so folks could use it, you know, the day and the time. And again, you know, the hope is to make it affordable for everyone. You know, currently, we wanna get it up, get it running, you know, get it successful, and some of that stuff we can fill in, you know, as we learn more about the program and who's using it and how they're using it.
So I guess my question is, the prices that you put up there, are they to include those special, like, drama and everything?
Yeah, that's all-inclusive.
All-inclusive? That's not like an extra fee on top of?
Nope. You pay your 125, and you've got drama. Thank you all so, thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Alright, so the rest of the agenda, we're gonna have student school presentations, parent groups, teacher reports, we're gonna have open to the public, superintendent's report, what were comments? We have two items under unfinished business, any new business that board members would like to include, and then we have the consent agenda. We are not expected to take a second executive session. And we are going to be changing the action on thirteen, point thirteen, the approved agreement with HYA. So the recommended action, we're gonna read a new resolution for that when it's time. I just took this on the table. And then, I apologize, we did, my copy didn't have that it was thirteen point oh one, and if you had a paper copy, it goes to thirteen point fourteen, but it should be thirteen point fifteen, which is agreement with Angelo Romano, was inadvertently omitted, so it was added to the dissent. So, okay, can you read the resolution for thirteen thirteen?
Resolution number thirteen point thirteen. Be it resolved that the Board hereby selects Hazard Young as an executive search consultant to perform a superintendent search in accordance with a proposal dated June tenth, twenty sixteen. And be it further resolved that the Board hereby authorizes its attorney, Shar Pearson, May Lambert, LLP, to prepare a revised contract with recommended edits discussed with the Board and HYA. And be it finally resolved that the Board President shall be authorized to sign such final agreement on the district's behalf, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference into the minutes of this meeting upon final execution.
Alright, are there any student or school presentations? Parent groups? Teacher reports? Open to the public? We have Mr. Bugs?
Good evening. This is my first opportunity to say congratulations publicly to new members of the Board, Mike, Meredith, and Anthony. But tonight, I'm sure that you've probably heard me in the past mention, back in 2010, when I moved into this area, first thing I looked at was the Beacon City School District website. And on that website, I saw a number of pieces of data that I have continued to bother you with over the last five or six years. But my understanding is, is that the Board is currently in the process of revising or updating its website, and for that reason, I'd like to ask that the Board consider some data on that website that I think the public is entitled to and should know. Specifically, I'd like to see that the Board would include data on employees, meaning administrative number, the race, the degrees, and their status, permanent, temporary, part-time. Instructional staff, the number, the race, their degrees, and their status. Clerical support, clerical or other support staff as well, with the same information. I'd also like to request that you include information on your website about students, the number of students enrolled in the district, what their race is, what their grade levels are, what their status is, and graduates by race and by sex, and dropout percentages by race. Please understand that I would like it to be, or should be, all aggregate data, so that no individual or whatever is singled out in that process. Additionally, I'd like to make one other point, and that is that one of the vital components of a successful school district is parents, parent involvement. And as you look around and at all the board meetings that I've been to, I've seen no more than twenty, twenty-five parents who attend board meetings, except on the one occasion when superintendent made some whatever changes, which resulted in a whole-scale number of people coming to the board meeting outraged about the decision that had been made. The reason I mention that is to suggest that, or ask if it's possible that the Board, in the interest of trying to generate more parent involvement and parent support, move the meetings outside of the school system and into community groups, churches, and places where people are likely to be more attracted to come into the board meeting merely because they have a connection to that particular unit.
That's time, Mr. Bugs.
We have over three thousand, about twenty-nine hundred kids.
Mr. Bugs?
Yeah.
That's the three-minute time limit. Thank you. If you have something written down you wanna submit it, you can submit it, and then we could...
Yes, as a matter of fact, as you reminded me, I would like to give to...
And Mr. Bugs, it's not that we don't wanna hear what you have to say, it's that we're adhering to policy.
I'm trying to be nice about it.
Wow.
I appreciate what you're doing. I just wanna give that, this, the list and the data that I think should be on the website, and I'd like to see included. But thank you for the time.
So, Mr. Bugs, I just wanted to tell you proactively what we're doing as we're going forward. And I know that you mentioned the data on the website, and I don't know what data that is, and it's probably outdated. So you mentioned a couple of good things. So you mentioned our new website, which we're excited about, and we thought would've been launched by now, and our tech director has been working extremely hard. However, his little boy was born three weeks early, so kind of, he came when he wanted, so it kind of put a little bit of delay, but that will be up and running before school starts.
Certainly.
The other thing that I wanna mention that is, in the school year sixteen, seventeen, we are required to report ethnicity and race data to State Ed on all of our employees. We already have it on our students. So we have created a survey, it will go out to the entire staff, and it's a self-reporting. So we'll mirror the information that we need to give to State Ed. The way it's been before is kind of, the administrators would guess what people were, and that's not an accurate way. So the survey is optional if someone feels they don't wanna do it, we can't make them do it, but I think people will be fine with it. We're gonna send it out when school starts and start getting that information. information, putting it into our human resources module, and we're able to run reports, so this way we're gonna put correct, updated information on there, and I'll take into consideration, you know, the things that you mentioned here.
Certainly, because I think that serves the public interest, and I, I would remind you that in two thousand ten, when I brought that data to the attention of the board, they removed it from the site immediately the next day, and, and six years later, there has been no data on, publicly made known to the people about, uh, what the race qualifications or any of that data that was on there has not been made public since that time.
Well, and, and so, right, no, I, I don't disagree with you, but I'd like to put, you know, I want to put data up there that's correct, and since we are required by the state to do that, now's a perfect opportunity to get the correct information together, compiled and put up on our website, okay?
Thank you. I won't take any more time. Thank you. Anybody else, there's no one else signed up, anybody else like this comment? Mr. Harper? What a gentleman.
I'm channeling my inner Anthony Seg by bringing my laptop up here for the first time ever. I promise not to make a Star Trek reference. Um, I just wrote this thirty seconds ago. I'm, I, first of all, I want to say thank you to every one of you for your service, appreciate it. Um, and really, I just have a couple of questions. Ms. Corderoni, we met, um, I think it was June thirtieth, off the top of my head, I'm pretty sure that was the date, um, and also Ms. Romly regarding, um, the status of the leadership in the pupil personnel services department, and I just wanted to get up here and follow up with you about, um, some of the things we talked about at the meeting, but just mostly to ask for an update on the status of the hiring of a new director of pupil personnel services. Just a couple of questions I had were, um, assuming you're going through the process, I know that, that the position had been, has been listed, and I think has been taken down already, um, just wondering how many resumes you did receive and how many candidates are you considering? Next question is, has a hiring committee been formed and have they met yet? Are they meeting more than once, how many times have they met? And, um, just wondering if interviews have taken place and if you've gotten closer to, um, you know, choosing a candidate. I know we're, uh, you know, sort of well into August at this point, and, um, you know, I know that everybody's still getting their ducks in a row, we've had a lot of changes and playing catch-up, um, but I also know that, and as we spoke about, um, you know, when these leadership changes take place, you know, it can take up to a year for things to kind of settle down and go back to normal and everybody get into a rhythm, so I'm just hoping to have some news as to where we are with that process. Thanks.
So I can tell you that we posted for that position, we did receive, um, resumes for it, and, um, off the top of my head, I don't know how many, we did have a hiring committee, we did interview candidates, unfortunately, we did not have a final candidate to bring to the board, so we are in the process of reposting the position. Our anticipate, we, we still are hoping, um, that we will have someone in place by the beginning of school. As you know, there's a lot of open positions in the district, so if you look on the agenda, you'll see a lot of positions being filled, we still have more to go, um, and we were even, um, thinking, and we were talking to the board to make sure we had quorum about having a special meeting next Monday to do some of the hiring, um, and not wait until August twenty-ninth, which is the week before school starts, because to tell you the truth, um, we, we at Central Office are a little, you know, panicked about it, we want to make sure people are in place, we want to be able to introduce those people to the public, we want to make sure everything is set, so, um, we, like I said, we did not have a successful candidate that had the experience that we felt could do the job, and we would rather reopen it and look for someone else, okay?
Mr. Harper?
You guys don't have to worry, I have no Star Trek references coming either. Too late. So, yeah, I just, I had to stop in because I've had a couple of parents come to me recently asking me about some things, and I had no real answer for them, so I figured I'd come here and, and voice what they were asking. It's more specifically into a lot of the, I mean, a lot of people know I have a strong hand in with a lot of the youth in the city, and so it's kind of leaning towards, you know, coaching and things on that nature, so, I mean, you guys would of course, well, at least some of the people would know better than I would. How, how do we go exactly about grabbing in new coaches on various athletic teams along those lines? With that also being said, with those coaches, I know a lot of times teachers do get the first opportunity, um, but with tho, with those teachers getting the first opportunity, are there any ways in which we are, we can potentially look, or are we embedding the, their actual knowledge of said sport versus just allowing a teacher who wants it to, to take it kind of as an extra paycheck, because, you know, I've, I've seen in certain sports, and, you know, I'm, I'm no, I'm no sports guru by any stretch of the imagination, but, you know, I've been sometimes when I hear, hear instruction given, I'm like, that's definitely not the right way to, to fix that issue, um, so it just kind of makes me concerned. A lot of times, a lot of these kids are, their main, their, one of the main ways outside of academics towards getting some money for them to go to school may come through athletics. With that being said, um, are there any partnerships maybe done with the, this coach and maybe like the guidance counselors to try to reach out for ways for these kids to get into various, you know, schooling, higher educations through tho, through those use of athletics? I mean, a lot of kids, I know some of the kids do their own YouTube videos of themselves, hoping that it comes across a correct kind of coach to get them, to get their exposure, but maybe there's a way we can look into adding that as kind of a partnership between the two, and, you know, we don't want to overly burden one with the other, but, you know, maybe even a, a so often needing to help them knowing, okay, this student has the opportunity, potentiality, you know, maybe we could send the video to this coach, so on and so forth. The actual evaluation of coaches, you know, is there, is there a yearly, is there a, every other yearly, you know, however that goes of the coaches? I don't want to severe and say performance because unfortunately sometimes you just also don't have, you know, looking at a soccer team, you may have a whole bunch of first-year players, you know, that's gonna, it, that may directly correlate to what the actual result is at the end of the year, so you don't want to hold that against someone per se versus, you know, versus them having a stellar team and destroying everybody.
Twenty seconds, Mr. Harper.
Um, and just continuing education within the sport, you know, there's, if there's anything that's, you know, kind of just keeping up with the newer stuff that's happening, stuff like that, and, um, I'm done. Show it in twenty seconds.
Okay, Mr. Harper, I'm gonna try to answer as much, I took notes, so if I miss something, let me know.
You, you go right ahead.
Okay, so yes, you are correct, as part of the teachers' union, um, contract, the teachers do get first right of refusal for being a coach, um, so when it's, when a coach, coaching position is posted within the district, um, first, if a teacher applies for it, then they're interviewed by the athletic director, um, if there is no teacher that applies for it, then it goes out to the community at large, um, and then there's an interview process. They are evaluated every year by the athletic director, and I know that if a specific parent has an issue with a coach, um, on that, you know, their child is on that team, that Mr. Nemec would like to know about it, um, sooner than later, just so that, you know, I've, over the years, you've seen an issue just kind of progress, um, and maybe it could be something that's resolved. I, I agree with you about, um, students being involved in sports and it leading to higher education, I think that's really important. Um, I know there's information from guidance, but maybe we could do a better job, um, in the athletic department about making sure that students know about what opportunities they have, because if, if you haven't gone through it before, you don't know somebody that's gone through it before, it's very difficult to, you know, maneuver it through that, um, and knowing to make a video of yourself and putting on YouTube, I know that that's how people do it, but it's hard if you don't really have somebody, you know, navigating through that. I know coaches have, um, updates every year where they have to get recertified for, you know, for CPR and for first aid, I know they do have continuing ed, I don't know if they have continuing ed in their sport, and I think that's what you were kind of looking for, right?
Yeah, I think the thing is also even with like the point of view of the teacher, like, uh, previous knowledge of said sport, you know, just be, and I don't want it to be, I don't want to take, you know, it's not taking away that ability of the teacher to get the job, but, you know, you don't want a person who's never played, say, baseball to now be the head baseball coach.
Right, no, I, I don't disagree with you, um, in some sports, we get a lot of people that want to apply, and then in other sports, we don't, you know, it's just the, the nature of the beast, but, um, I think the message that I could probably share with you, and then maybe you can share with the parents, if there is a specific concern about a specific program, we would like to know about it, um, and if they could reach out to, um, Mr. Nemec as the first point of contact to just kind of voice their concerns, um, and I, I would ask that they put their name on it, um, because we do get a lot of anonymous, um, complaints, and it's very hard to investigate that, I mean, it would be kept confidential, but, um, that's the only way that I can think we can do that at first if there's really an issue out there, because we'd really like to know about it before it becomes a really big issue, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
So, um, I, I kind of, some of it I've said already, we talked about the website launch when, when I was answering Mr. Bugs, so, um, we're actively trying to get that, um, online, um, and we are still keeping up some limited information on the old website just to keep people informed, um, but the exciting thing about the new website, when you see it, is when you click on the website link, you will see pictures of students, which we are extremely excited about, because the website we have right now, I don't think there's a picture of a student or an activity or a sporting event or anything, so, um, we're very happy about that, it's very easy to maneuver, you'll be able to, um, find things a little bit quicker, um, we have talked to the board, um, about launching a Facebook page and a Twitter page, um, from the district, so we're working on getting that together as well to get some information out into the public. The other good news is that we, we are moving forward with getting a new sign, we've talked about the new sign for a long time, um, but we were able to, um, make an agreement with a sign company who's done work, actually, they did work at the Hudson, at the Renegade Stadium, but they've also done a couple of school districts in Hyde Park, um, they, they placed the order for the sign late Friday afternoon, it will be up and running before the beginning of school, so that's exciting, because we've been waiting an awfully long time for that.
Which sign is it?
The sign on the corner of Mattel, on the electronic sign.
Thank you.
Um, an event that's happening, uh, we have been having some conversations with I Am Beacon, and I just want to, um, mention that they're having a back-to-school block party on August twentieth, um, so I'd like, um, all of our PTAs have made a commitment to be there, our food service manager has, has as well, um, and, um, as much as the board, and, um, Mrs. Romly and I will be there to support the event for kids. It is twelve to four. Um, and, and last but not least, I, I mentioned briefly, um, about the hiring that has been going on, and we have been interviewing, and I, I did want to mention, um, that we would ninety-nine percent sure have a, a meeting, a special meeting on Monday to do some more of the hiring, so stay tuned and we will, uh, give you more information, and that's it.
Great. Board comments? Anthony?
No, I'm just gonna say that, um, a few things, one is, uh, participating in the River Swim yesterday, and, um, it's supposed to, for, and they're looking for lifeguards, so they were asking me if I knew, uh...
Ann, can you use the mic?
Um, I participated, I volunteered for the, uh, the, the River Swim across from River Beacon, um, and they asked if I, uh, knew any contacts or something, so they, like, hire more lifeguards, I'd say, uh, they contact River Pool Board if they want to fly. Second, this is, uh, my second month on the board, and, uh, um, it's, you know, it's been a lot of work, uh, on my end, but I'm, uh, still, uh, still looking forward to, uh, to push on. Sorry, I couldn't come up with Star Trek.
All right. Bill?
Last but not least, I attended the, uh, the meeting of the officers of the Dutchess County School Board Association, uh, there's a new executive director, Kelly Latton, who is a longtime, um, board member and board president of the Oregon School District, so she's now the executive director of the Dutchess County School Association. Uh, we had an organization meeting to go over, um, our program and agenda for the coming year, um, so I'm talking forward, some really exciting, um, presentations that'll be coming out in the next year, and that's all, talk more about that at the next board meeting, and invite people to come down to our meetings, which are typically the first Thursday of every month, except for September, when it will be the second Thursday, in case of a Labor Day.
Thank you. Mary?
Can I ask Anne Marie a couple of questions? I can't, oh, no, can I ask Anne Marie a couple of questions in my board comments?
Sure.
So, Anne Marie, I was wondering, we have a new principal of South Avenue School, I don't think this is on...
What's the line on the other side of this?
Okay, Anne Marie? Um, I'm wondering if there's, if we're going to be able to meet the principal of South Avenue at any special event, or would we be able to meet the teachers' event later in the school year? And my other question is, uh, some people have received their teachers' assignments, um, but others have not, and I'm wondering if you could give them something like that?
Well, I, I, I don't believe that the students at South Avenue have received their teacher assignments, is that the school you're talking about?
Yes.
Well, we're hoping to send them out tomorrow, we wanted someone to sign the letters, and I didn't want to confuse people. Um, yes, there'll be some information, um, there'll be a letter going out to parents about how to meet the new principal, I will introduce her in a little while, but I just wanted to, um, move forward a little bit.
And then my only, um, board comment, I wanted, I mentioned the last board meeting that, um, there's gonna be this Need the Club Day, or it's basically an open house at high school, and it's gonna be August twenty-second, six-thirty, um, I know the meeting planners will be there, and I know whether the clubs will be represented, um, hopefully they'll present to grow, and also just very, very excited about the after-school program, I think that's gonna be a great addition to Beacon, and help you can see it grow and grow and grow.
What was your August twenty-second?
That's the, um, I guess it's open house at high school, six-thirty, yeah.
Seven. Okay, thanks. Mike?
Um, I, I also am excited about the after-school program, uh, it's really, will help Beacon, you know, be a good thing for Beacon, especially as we go, looking for a superintendent, to see it vibrate, you know, a common, uh, you know, a good after-school program will help us be more, you know, attractive to other, you know, more candidates. I also, I saw the, the Beacon Pool, Beacon City Pool up at the old settlement, I know you did a fantastic job, there's a lot of, a lot of people that go there, my son actually, um, uh, lifeguard's there, and it's just really great to see the community out, so I think what the city's doing is great.
Charlie?
Um, so, at the end of July, we had a policy committee meeting, and, um, the purpose of that committee meeting was to kind of work off of some of the information, um, that we left off at the last school year, um, through notes from, um, Mrs. Galbo, um, and one of the things that we did decide that we were hoping to bring forward to the board this evening was to adopt the full policy book and then work off in parts. We have been trying to update our policy book, um, by making updates as we were going along, and it's just been a little tedious, and by the time we get through some of the policy updates, we are needing to go back and review policies, um, again. The reason why we are not bringing it forward to the board this evening is, and maybe you can help me with a little bit of that, regarding, you know, some issues in, um, I guess transferring the full policy book over to us.
Well, we have, um, sections of the policy book which we are going to move forward, however, there are, um, I don't, I, I can mention Jessica Goldstein from NISBA, who was here at the last board workshop to explain the whole process, um, but they, they reviewed our entire policy book, they, um, looked at that, made sure the information that was in our old policy or in our new policies, and actually had some suggestions in parentheses, and sent it to us electronically. So, all we have to do then is just to scan through all of the electronic files, just take out the things that are in parentheses, put in little information here and there, and then the sections of the policy would be ready to create, so, um, there was a little miscommunication on my part, I thought we could call NISBA and say, okay, take out all the words in the parentheses and we'll just adopt the book, but it doesn't work that way, um, we have to do a little bit of manipulating of the data, which we will work on doing, and then still move forward with the process.
Another action that we did move on that evening was to discuss a student board member, um, it was something that was brought up by a student here, but it's something that we have been discussing, um, and we would like to move forward with that, and we are bringing that, um, one of the things we felt, we have to put it on the, um, May budget vote, so it has to be approved by the public, it is something that we have to, um, bring every two years, we did find out that we do not need to have a specific policy, but we are hoping to... We did find out that we do not need to have a specific policy, but we are hoping to, the policy committee is going to look at writing up something, just to have a little description of some of the roles and responsibilities, as well as a reminder that it's something that has to be brought up every two years for an election. And that has been forwarded to Kelly as well. And we were hoping to have another policy committee meeting on August 15th, but we're just bumped. Yes, we were just bumped. So, we have to look at dates again, due to people's vacations.
What was this one that we had?
August 29th, but Kenya will not be here.
So, we have the schedule for September.
We may need to bump it to September.
Okay.
Or if we can't find another date in between then.
Or maybe we could just wait to see if the, how it's going with getting the updates for the O3, even if Kenya's not there, but that's what we could focus on, to see how we can move forward, so maybe then in September, we'll have something to bring forward to the board.
Yeah, we were going to be prior to the board meeting on the 29th.
Okay. Okay. I'll try and exclude you, Kenya.
Thanks, Anthony. So, just wanted to thank the Beacon Program for the Youth Police Academy. I think that it's wonderful that the program has grown, so much has been invested in the program, and I was really excited and thrilled to see the video the first time, and more excited to see it again today. I know there's a lot of hard work that goes into that program, and the dedication. I was just wondering if there was any information on the fire department portion, if possible, Christine, if you could get that. Just because those two programs were working concurrent with one another, so I wanted to see, you know, how well they were blossoming. And it's the first year for that program, so it probably will slow and steady, but I'm sure that it will grow. My other question was about the Grow Your Own program that existed within the high school. I really didn't get what the outcome was of that program. It was a great program for the ninth and 10th graders in the district, and if I can get the information of the students who attended, what the outcome was, how things were measured, I would appreciate that. Also, wanted an update on the bullying programs that were running concurrently throughout the district, and what the status is of that. One of the letters that we received from a student here at the last board meeting stated that, I'm not really sure if they knew if a bullying program existed, and so if possible to get the information and how that information is shared, as there is a continuation of the bullying program, with representatives on the agenda tonight. The other question that I had was on, I know we were discussing policy 1130, and the idea of Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram was discussed. The administrators were supposed to be brought into the loop at the, I believe, the July meeting, Anne Marie, if I'm not mistaken, and so I just wanted to know how, at the July 27th meeting, so I wanted to know how the administrators received that information, as there is a goal to get information out with the new system that's going to be put in place, and so it would be good to know that the administrators are on board, and they're aware of what we're doing, so that the program can be productive. My last question is, I know that the August graduation is slated for the 24th, then the LGI, but I'm not really certain on the time, and I wanted to know about that. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't know if I got it all, but I will, whatever I don't, you just correct me, and I'll fill in. I don't know what the end result was of the Grow Your Own program, but I will ask the question. I do know the person, the liaison that was working with us in Maris had left and gone to a different, a different school, so I don't know how it ended up, but I can get you that information. The bullying program, you'll see, there's, there's things on the agenda to appoint people to work on, the PBIS slash OVEAS, OVEAS was the bullying program, and both programs were being offered last year, but there's, there's overlap in both of the programs, so that's why it's a slash, PBIS slash OVEAS. So, what these groups will be doing over the summer, will be looking at what the schools had offered for PBIS, incorporating what they can from OVEAS, and not run two separate programs, because I think that it was counterproductive to do something like that. So, there's, there's some work in the summer, so that we're ready for school. What I did miss, Kenya, is what you said about the administrators on July 27th, can you just say that one more time?
The policy 1130, you were supposed to, you said that you were going to discuss with them the Twitter, Facebook information, and how we feed information out, so that they would be aware, and then...
Yes, I did mention it to them. I told them that I spoke to the board about it, about offering a Facebook and a Twitter account. They were fine with it. It's just a matter of rolling it out, and as soon as we get the website out, we'll start it, you know, we're going to have one from the district level. There'll be one Facebook account, as far as I understand, that will be managed more at central office, but we're talking to the principals about having Twitter accounts, so we're going to, more to come on that, okay?
We had a representative here at the high school for the program, so is there any report on that, in terms of that, that went about the...
I can ask Dr. Seaverly. Yes.
And then graduation, right?
I believe it's 11 o'clock. I'm going to check, I'm going to check my calendar right now, because it's on here.
Okay, thank you.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, I just want to give you a little update about HYA, the search for superintendentcy. I know that Meredith has been working diligently and hard with them, and that's so appealing to see that they're on the agenda to approve tonight for 1313, as we change the recommended action. But you're going to see that the fact, the work is going to happen very fast, so they did, we, Meredith, we did put a tentative schedule together and so forth, so that will be coming out, where the, they will be interviewing district stakeholders and so forth, and then community stakeholders. So, one of the questions that I had, and I'm going to try something new here tonight, so if you have a smartphone, please feel free to take it out, we're going to try and get public participation through technology. So, if you go to, and if you go to HTTPS, it might maybe, can you type it on the computer, then it would be up on there? So, I'm going to say it verbally, I'll say it slow, and then it will hopefully be up there. If you go to HTTPS, colon, backslash, backslash...
He's not, he's not there.
No, I'll say it over for you, Mike Alba's going to hand it to you, so you can see it. You're, you ready?
It's moving.
Oh, you're moving. So, I'll give you the paper mic here. You could go to that one right there, that's the shorter one, that Anthony made for me. So, it's HTTPS, colon, backslash, backslash, G-O-O, period, G-L, backslash, capital I, capital T, lowercase t, the number 1, capital W, and the number 3.
Bingo.
Thumbs up, if you have something that has like a little pad with a question on there, so you could respond to that, and what will happen is, that will save, we could save those responses to see, you know, if we're missing anything and so forth, so we'll take that into consideration. We're going outside the box, Christine. Unfinished business, the first discussion that we need to, the first item on the agenda for unfinished business is discuss board vacancies. Last time we had a discussion, we didn't come to a quorum, it was a 4-3 vote. So, I think to kind of streamline it, last time we were talking about whether we appoint, or whether we go through election. Last time we had the discussion, we had one vacancy, now we have two vacant seats. So, I'd like to have a 15-minute discussion on it, and then maybe some one or two proposals, if we could come to an agreement on to what, how to move forward with it, and so someone then can make motion. So, I'd like to try and limit it to like a 15-minute discussion, so we can start moving forward on it. Would anybody like to start?
Okay, is it, I think that the biggest, basically what we outlined last time was a appointment process, where we started with an application, the interested parties that, you know, wanted to apply, admitted qualifications, submitted the application, you know, basically why you want to be on board. We had a lot of questions of whether or not we should have input from the public, public direct questioning, and I think from what we were talking, if we had at least, as is my opinion, if we had the public submit questions to say, hey, here's questions that I'm interested or for the board to consider of these applicants, then we would, we would take those questions. The applicants would, at a selected board meeting, give a presentation of about five minutes about, you know, who I am, and why I want to be on the board, and then the board would do private interviews with our standard set of questions, plus the input from the, you know, questions from the public, and then we would do an appointment, a vote for appointment of the members. So, again, still an appointment process, I think it's a lot less expensive than a special election, and since, since these members will only be, their term will only be till May anyway, going through the expense, the money I think could be put federally elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you for having me. Anybody else? Anthony?
Yeah, so I've been struggling with this, recently as yesterday, I still have people coming up to me, they prefer a special election, I told them it costs 13,000, they said, well, we want the public to be involved, we want the public to be able to influence the choice. So, at the last board meeting, as noted, you know, I was against the private interviews. I did try to drag something that maybe balanced everybody's concerns, and I'll hand this, I'll hand this down to everyone, and I have some for the public, if they want to come up and get a copy of this. So, what I did was, I tried to balance everyone's concerns. Obviously, we still want to publish a notice of vacancy or vacancies, make sure that everyone knows that it's vacant. Have an application, uniform application, so this is the way you're going to apply the candidates, it's uniform, and a deadline to the application. Obviously, you can play around with the days, it could be longer than 30, but no shorter than 21, I work here, but you can play around with those days. Where the notice to be published, obviously, special newspapers would be best. And then there's some, some regulatory stuff, that they have any qualification, be a member, and the board members that provided the application, only get to the close of the deadline. And then, this is where I try to balance everybody's concerns. The, at the discretion of the board, depending on the number of applicants, the board may interview all, some or none of the applicants, where each candidate will be asked, and the same question, and maintain consistency. Afterwards, the board will select which applicants will be placed on the board meeting workshop for a presentation. The number of applicants selected by the board must exceed the number of vacancies by at least a factor of two, if there are sufficient qualified applicants. Presentation and workshops are followed the following format. Blue workshop, appearance association of the district, and sponsoring the candidates to the event, should one of them so wish, and if the format below is incorporated. The format has three things. Presentation by the applicant, the board meeting workshop for five minutes, the board may ask questions for five minutes, and the public can ask questions, so I forgot to put that on there. And then we can vote on the appointment that day.
Yes.
Can take office immediately. Should the, and should the vacancy continue, we can restart the selection process. I also made conditions that the application shall require, provide information, an affirmation, immediate qualification with the board, and why the wish to serve, and so on. So, the reason why I wrote this up is that there's one uniform procedure that is followed, and we don't have to argue about how we're going to appoint a board member. This, this process, we can decide to be automatically triggered.
George, you have comments? Go ahead.
Well, I think some of the information is kind of close to what we were discussing, you just outlined it more. I don't think the board should interview all, some, or none. I think whoever applies, we should interview. I really don't think we should, you know, whoever applies for the vacant positions, we should interview everyone. That's one. Some of the things that we were discussing at the last board meeting, as far as asking the questions, is, it's kind of hard to, how are we going to qualify the responses based on the public? Like, if they ask the questions in public, how are we qualifying those responses to make the appointment, without doing a special election? I think that's why we said that we would ask for questions from the public, and we would incorporate those in with whatever standard questions that we would ask at a private interview. Those are just two things that are just standing out to me right now, and trying to read this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm with Georgia on this, in terms of my understanding from contention last time, really, we had to do mostly with whether we were going to be asking the questions in public or in private, and I'm in favor of doing it in private, so I think you might get more candidates, or more honest answers from the candidates, if it's done in private. I also agree that anybody who applies, we should, we should interview. I don't want to limit it, right now, Anthony's said that we only interview those number of vacant, number of candidates who exceeded the vacancy by a factor of two. I think if we, if only one, one person that applies, we should interview them, and if they're qualified, we come on the board, and if they're not qualified, we can always go out again, but I don't want to, you know, limit, limit the pool to, based on a certain number. As long as at least one person applies, I think it should be, and I prefer being on a private session, but I do, would like to get, would like to get questions from the public, in case there's any, any concerns or questions they ask that we haven't thought of, I think that would be appropriate as well.
Let me just clar, let me just clarify, I didn't suggest that we restrict the number of applicants or any, on visiting. What I did do is, I did respect the board's right to interview in private, and the board can decide to continue all, some, or none, that's my wording. If the board wishes to interview all, they can. If the board gets 100 applicants, maybe the board would like to screen some of the applications, and interview 25 of them. If all 100 of them are strictly qualified, yes, I would encourage the board to interview all 100 of them. But I didn't make a restriction for that. What I did was, I respected the board's right to interview in private. The second thing about questioning in the public is, you can tweak it to, you can tweak it so that the questions are pre-selected. The way I had envisioned it is that we would, we, the interview in private process is already built in, and we would select semi-finalists.
So, hold on, I feel that we're all on the same page with the appoint, so does anyone want to make a motion? Because I'm not carrying an election, and...
I make the motion to fill the two vacancies by appointment. Sorry.
So, Georgia made a motion, seconded by Kenya. Comments or questions?
Well, yeah, how are we supposed to fill it?
We could talk about the process of the appointment after we do, so I think that we made some leeway, that we're talking about all appointment component, so then we could add on to that, that we're going to figure out a process of what to use, but we're going to fill it through appointment, not election.
Well, I'd like to record to show that my original position was by special election, and that I ended up trying to find a compromise.
Your vote will show that, Anthony.
And I'm trying to find a compromise by going through the appointment process, that includes a public interview process.
Noted. All those in favor is to fill the vacancies through an appointment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we have a couple of minutes still left, so now if you want to talk about the procedure, as to how to fill those through the appointment process.
All right, I make a, I make a motion, that the base, basic components of the procedure shall include an application, an interview with no limits on the, to the number of people, we'll interview all the people, and we vote by, that's an appointment process. So, so really, my motion is that we're going to have an application, and we're going to interview all applicants.
Do I have a second? Meredith, second.
And, and the, so the reason I say it that way is I'm breaking it down again, okay? So, we have an appointment, now we're going to do an application, and we're going to do interviews, and then we still have to decide... And then we start to decide if interviews are probably private, we start to decide about the questions.
Yep.
So that's why I wrote it down just to the application process, and then we're going to interview all applicants.
Got it. Meredith, second. Any comments or questions to what makes that?
I'm concerned that we're doing this piece by piece. I know why we're doing it piece by piece, I think that is best, but I'm concerned that it would be good piece by piece, um, that is something that we are more concerned about, it's not addressed.
So I think, Anthony, I think the, the basis for trying to do it piece by piece is so that we can narrow down, um, what we actually want to do without constantly going back and forth, without reaching a resolution. So the goal is to kind of get closer and closer to, to the goal of what we want to do.
True, but when it comes to negotiation, when you have given away most of your chips, and you have no other chips to compromise to, you can't get someone else in the corner that can't trade anything else for compromise.
So what happens is, is that this is, this is where you will have your ability to exercise your voice, and you will vote on the things that you want. And there is an area in which you have more concern, then you should voice your concerns or just add to what you think should be added to, or ask to remove something or not go along with it. That is the way that we can kind of move forward.
Anthony, I understand what you're saying. I want you to have the ability to voice what your opinion is and what your thought process is. And, and after you do that, if, if it's going, other board members may chime in and jump on that, or they may not, or, but to come to come some consensus as to what, what we're going to do. I think last time, we had a great length of discussion about it, and we came to no resolution. And I think it's an important enough topic that we need to, um, fill the seats, and we need to get it, do it rather quickly. Um, I always worry, um, when we have a board meeting, I know especially in the summer, that we're not going to have enough for a quorum. And then, you know, there's a lot of business that has to get done that affects the daily routines for students. And if it's not getting done, I, so I, I want to try and move forward. I'm just trying to do it the best way possible. I, you made a comment about negotiating, so, th- this isn't negotiating, this is trying to come up with the best process that's time efficient and that's meeting the needs of the district. And in the district, I'm talking about all the stakeholders, the public, the board members, and everybody else. So, Mike, you made a motion to review all applications and have all interviews.
No, we don't want to interview yet.
No, well, no, the, the motion was that, um, we will use an application, and that we will interview all applicants that are, uh, or qualified applicants.
All right, and Meredith, seconded. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So I make a motion for all the candidates to meet the qualifications, have a candidate presentation, board interview, and, uh, yeah. So make a motion for all the candidates to meet the qualifications, candidate presentation, and board interview.
So you want the interview to be by the board? That's basically what, what you're changing is that you want the interview to be by the board?
And the candidate, yeah. Meet the candidate, candidate presentation. I had, oh, I left out meet the candidate, I meet the candidate.
So you want to have it that there will be a meet, a motion to meet the candidate by the public or by the...
By the public.
By the public? Okay.
That the each candidate meets the qualifications.
That's it, they have the...
Candidate presentation.
At, at a board meeting or...
Yes, and board interview.
And, and then interview by the board?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes, I have a question.
You second, Meredith?
I do.
Meredith, second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I, you said meet the candidates plus a presentation? Or is that the same?
Well, meet the candidate would give the community the opportunity to actually...
Like, you're at a board meeting? Like, that's, that's the idea that I had.
It, it can be both, I think, um, but it would have to be, I don't know, I was looking at similar to what they did before in terms of meet the candidate, um, just giving the community the opportunity to present in these same questions that we're going to actually use, but allowing them to actually, you know, present it themselves.
So I have to that? I think that last one was done by the PTA, PTOs, so maybe we can, you can reach out, and that's something that they could do on, on their own.
As long as we do all, every, if we can do it.
Okay.
We need more help.
Okay. So basically, uh, Kenya added to the motion that the interviews be by the board, and Meredith seconded it.
But I have a, I have a question.
Sure.
So the interviews by the board, you're saying would be in private?
Yes.
And then the community would have the opportunity to do meet the candidate, to ask their questions. So we could even, um, the question was, do we do it here at a board night, the same night that they do their presentation? I think that can be, we can actually cash that off right now, if we need to, like, what we think the best way would be.
Yeah, that's an agenda item, so that's something that we can add to the agenda, and we can meet that anyway.
Okay, is that okay?
Okay, so the motion, um...
I have a comment.
Sure.
Um, is, there's a question, to meet the candidates, uh, being pronounced by PTA. So that means we're going to hold off on our decision until after we've had a meet a candidate?
It, it is my hope that we would have to meet the candidate first, and then have the board interview, and then finalize.
And what would be the purpose of, of, of the meet the candidate? I mean, the public's not going to be, um, giving their opinion on which candidates, just their preferred candidate, are they?
They, they, they will not, but they will be afford the opportunity to ask the questions, um, that they feel that they want to ask to the candidate, and we're gonna, my, my idea is to afford them that opportunity. Even though they will not be part of the final appointment, they will have the opportunity to ask the questions that they want to ask of the candidate.
Are we going to be getting questions from the public to ask, or, or not?
That was in the original motion.
That was it, yes.
Okay. So, the candidate's responses to meet the candidate, I don't really matter to us.
Um, I, I'm gonna say that it will, when you, when you say it doesn't matter to us, you have to tell me what, what that means.
Well, A, we may not be there, and, 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 and B, if they're, we're asking, we're getting a question ready from the public. So, and, and the public is not going to be able to express their opinion on, on the results of those answers. So, what's, how is that different than just giving us the questions and having us to ask?
I think they will, if they give us the questions and we ask them, then they won't have the ability to hear what the responses are. And so if you ask the questions publicly, those that are interested will show up, I don't know if it'll be recorded and it'll be turned to board meeting. If not, then those that are interested in knowing what this person's views and, and ideas are, they'll show up and they'll hear that firsthand. And then we go back and we ask whatever questions we have to ask, and we, we appoint. So the final decision is with us, but I think we're allowing the public to just have some input, the community to have some input.
Well, input means they would be telling us which candidates they prefer.
I, I, that's why I changed it, that's why I changed it. So that input, just having the ability to ask the questions that they want to ask.
They're not going to tell us which candidates they prefer?
I, I didn't see any room in that, for that.
So, is that...
So you don't see the point, and, right, I think you expressed it, you didn't see the point in that because they're not, they're not going to have the ability to appoint the candidate, so we're, you're saying, well, why should they have the ability to ask the question? I'm just saying that there are people who came out for the last meet the candidate. We can't determine whether all of those people participated in, in, in the ability to vote, or whether they wanted to choose that candidate or not. And so we're just giving them the opportunity. This is just my one vote, it doesn't have to go that way, but this is the way I feel.
I'm, I'm just concerned you may limit the pool, there may be certain people who would be good candidates for the board, but maybe we'd like them to go with something like a meet the candidate.
Please, please, public comment's over, public comment is over.
When I, when I first opened office, I talked about trust, and you said, you responded back transparency. Transparency is only a form of trust. You have to trust them so they can trust us. If you don't have a public venue for the candidates, um, um, to interact with the public, um, how can they trust us to make decisions and whatnot? Now, the other thing about, um, the other thing about, um, trust is that when we make a nomination, that we explain why we chose, who we chose, but that would solve itself if they've already had gone through a meet the candidate night, um, and the, the public themselves could probably infer why we chose that specific person. So it does solve some problems and does solve some steps in trying to foster better trust with the public. Now, I will also say that, you know, there's plenty of examples where the governmental body has the authority, exercises that authority, but doesn't in the public. I mean, look at, um...
Anthony, hold on, we, we started the motion on there, and so, this, deal with it because I don't want to lose it of what it is. You're going into...
Okay, well, I haven't finished, I haven't finished my discussion. So what happens is...
Your, your button's not on topic too.
Oh, yes, it is. I said, which, I'm supporting the meet the candidates, and I'm, and I'm giving example, a federal example, where you have a US, you have a senate committee meeting, uh, senate confirmation hearing, and that is done also in public. So I don't understand why, uh, we should, even though we have the responsibility and the right to, uh, appoint someone, that we should do it under the cover of night. I'm sorry.
Okay. Mike?
Um, so, is it still discussion? So, Kenya, it sounded like your, what your motion was saying was, we are going to have applications. You're going, we're going to have a meet the candidate night, where the public would have the opportunity to ask questions. And after that, we would have the, the board, you know, the, the candidates would all make a statement to the board, and we would have, and then we would do our interviews and do our voting. So what you're putting in there is the meet the candidate piece, which gets, allows the public to ask questions.
Yes.
And then we get to, we could be there, listen to that as well as input. We hear what they say in their statement, and then we do our own, uh, private interviews, and then take our votes.
Yes.
So that's what it sounded like your motion would say.
That's what it was.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Meredith, second Kenya's motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so just kind of sum up where we're at. So we have, that is going to be by an appointment, there's going to be an application, then there's going to be, uh, meet the candidate by the public, then the candidate is going to address the board in public session at the, at a board meeting, and then they will be interviewed by the board in private. Does that sound like...
A true representation as to what we discussed?
It sounds like we, what we voted on.
Okay. I just want to make sure. All right. Next item for unfinished business is, uh, board retreat.
We forgot the last one.
What was that?
That we vote on the one?
That, that's a part of the agenda. Yeah, it would go on the agenda. I agree with you, I didn't add it, but I thought that was part of the agenda, it would be, it wouldn't just be like, hey. Discussion for board retreat. Um, Meredith, I know that you were, you had some ideas. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know that you had some out there that we were considering last time.
So, the last time I brought this up, I actually brought the idea of, um, working with, um, pastor in the district. Um, he also happens to be a parent in the district, and that seemed like a possible conflict of interest. Um, means we want to create a safe place for all the board members, and a place where we can be honest and grow, uh, grow our working relationship. So, um, on the agenda tonight, you'll see that the district is signing up with this guy, Chip Wood, who is a former principal, um, has written several books about, um, child development. And he also offered a board retreat that was actually what my original idea was inspired from, but that was free, so I was trying to go the freeway, but I, but at this point I think nothing's free. So, um, his, he has four principles, relationships, reflection, resilience, and renewal. Um, he has offered to do a retreat for us. Um, I did check the dates, and at this point, the only date that we are all available, um, for video, and he's available, with his partner, Ann Meyer, who he works with, is October twenty-ninth. So, I guess I'd like to make a motion to, um, to use Chip Wood and Ann Meyer to do board retreat on October twenty-ninth, around nine to three thirty, um, based on his four hours of training.
Oh, Meredith, we went into resolution, we need a contract for him.
Uh, but, so would we do a motion to, to get a contract, or...
We would just do a contract.
Just tell us, yeah.
So...
Any other ideas for, from board members?
Yeah, there are, you, well, I'm just concerned, I can't tell my calendar on the twenty-ninth, I can't do the twenty-fifth at this point.
I mean, with the topic at hand, though.
Um, I, I'd just like to throw, there's one suggestion, um, the New York State School Association also does a, um, a, a board retreat, uh, you know, which of course is targeted towards, towards school board sense, that's the, I can't remember what they say they are. We did have one of those, um, back in the spring, I think it was, uh, late, it was on, um, that's it. I thought that was pretty valuable, and so I picked it for, that is another, another suggestion.
I was wondering since you're working with Chip Wood already in the district, is it possible to do both? Like, I, I like the NISBA idea, and I do like Chip Wood, since he's going to be working with the children already in the district, there's certain language, as Meredith had pointed out and I have read, uh, that will be utilized, and I think it'll be beneficial to us as a board to actually learn that language, adjust to it, adopt to it, and then have multiple, um, areas in which we can improve, you know, communication. So, I'm saying they're all involved everywhere, and bringing the ball, everybody.
I think that would be matter, I mean, I definitely think that a workshop with NISBA could be very helpful, um, so it's not a prioritizing. Yeah, for me, communication is a priority, um, but I, so I've done lots of slides.
I, I want to apologize to Meredith, that when I responded to the availability, I didn't mean to say that I was available, when I now actually not.
So no one's available?
I'm running on, uh, the, the next, uh, big fair cafe that day, um, so, uh...
So we're into November for that?
Well, what I did say, what I did say...
Go ahead.
Oh, so what I did say, though, was that we do need to meet much sooner on our goals, so, um, whenever that topic will come up, we'll talk about that.
So can we ask, or can I ask that the board members send available dates for, um, September and October? So then we, then I can see if there's a common thread, and then we could look to at least sort of find a date. It seems like everyone's in agreement that we might be able to do a combination of Chip Wood and NISBA, but then we could look to see who's available at those dates and so forth?
You're looking for evenings or weekends?
I think that we'd need to set aside like six hours at least, so I would say a day, a weekend. If we could do it a weeknight, maybe two weeknights, like a three and a three.
So just give us, give your availability for both weeknights and weekends.
Correct. If it's week, if it's starting a week, though, we'll break it up into two, two, three-hour sessions, or...
We spend six hours here during board meeting. We can do it in one night.
I couldn't help it.
We're working on that, Mike.
Do we need to vote, do we need to just vote, or...
Um, I don't think that we need to vote to agree, it was just more discussion to see, get some dates and then...
I mean, I don't know why we would go to vote right now. I mean, I feel like we did this NISBA thing last fall, and it went nowhere. We never, we never returned, we spent two evenings, three hours apiece, um, two evenings, um, breaking out into groups and doing things, and then we never got back together to report out on it. That's all I'm saying.
I agree, and that's why we're trying to work on follow-through, um, and so forth. So, I just want to, I don't want to...
Come up with and get a common date, and then have it be one person, and they're not available for the dates that we get to common dates. So I, I'd like to leave it open for two, to kind of see if it, if it's either, or I think that we could tailor the NISBA, if we do go with NISBA, I think we could tailor it differently to meet our needs a little bit better.
My, my concern with just going into September, and that we need to get the dates, is that we're going to hit like open houses, and, you know, evenings, and, um, like, uh, you know, personnel and our district level.
That's why it's September, October, see what we could get there.
But Anthony, so are you, uh, are you trying to merge the two identities?
I would rather not.
I wasn't trying to merge, I was trying to look at the availability, once I get dates from everybody and see the common dates, then we could reach out to Chip or NISBA, both of them, and see who's available. It might be process of elimination as to what we can do.
Meredith, that's a question, so the, the course that Chip has, um, in total, I guess you said, or six hours, but if you were just, if you were one at a time, would that, would that just, uh...
He doesn't, I think, so, I think that, you know, just getting in here, smooth, wanna wanna take advantage of him, um, and I, yeah, I don't think you can split the body up there, I think it's more of a holistic approach.
Anybody else have any comments for the retreat? All right, so the follow-through is going to be to send some available dates for September and October to myself, and I'll look at the common dates, yeah, for September and October, and I'll look at some common dates to the, for weeknights, have it try and be two consecutive nights, and then weekends. Okay. Any new business?
I have new business. Um, uh, it goes along with the, um, legal services proposals, so I wanted to make a motion to request additional information from three of the, of the firms. And I don't know, I don't know if we're ready to just, you know, discuss these, or, or want to hear your feedback, actually.
My feedback?
Yeah, for, can we, if we can discuss these now, or we still have?
Well, the purpose of putting them on the agenda, I didn't think that we would have time tonight to discuss it, but I wanted to make sure that the board members, because they are quite lengthy, and I know that people want to pay attention to detail when they're reading them, and, um, when we were meeting for the agenda, Amber and I thought that, you know, it was a great possibility, if we could get a quorum, then we would be here on the 15th. So that's where we wanted to start having that conversation, and then maybe going into the 29th as to looking more in depth, but...
Okay, so, so we'll, I'll bring that up at the next board meeting.
Correct.
I'm going to withdraw my partial motion.
Okay. But I wanted to share with you guys, so you can start reading them.
Okay, so the public knows, they should tell them that we do have, do have...
We did receive the five RFPs for legal counsel, um, they were shared with the board members, and I'm asking them to read them, so we can start discussing now.
I have some new questions as well. Um, I was wondering, I would like to, um, make a motion to discuss committees.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, go ahead.
I just, um, we talked about providing some committees that already existed, so we can talk about that a little bit. I, I'm particularly, um, interested in, in getting the diversity, I'm not sure if that's right anymore, but, um, diversity committee, if I'm going to go in.
I support that.
Can you give us a little bit as, what, what would be the goal of the committee, and what would they be discussing?
The goal of the committee, in my mind, we've talked about the lack of staff diversity in our district a lot, um, unfortunately, it seems to match the numbers, the state numbers pretty closely, um, so while I don't want to give up the goal of having more diverse staff and begin, I wanted to sort of have a second goal of, um, of addressing our student body, um, and looking at the data in our district in terms of disproportionality, um, and not only the data, but also somehow creating, I don't know, I have to write it today, I don't even want to use the word conversation anymore, but creating a conversation where people can talk about their experiences here, um, as a minority, as a white person, um, just sort of opening that up. So that would be my goal.
Okay.
If I can add to that, I am, Anthony, hold on, I can answer.
I just wanted to know how well done would this committee be?
Um, that's a good question. Every other month I would do it.
I would do that after.
Go ahead, Anthony?
If I can add to that, um, you know, this wouldn't be a committee of just board members, this would be, uh, multifaceted committee, um, so that we can, um, kind of like a, uh, kind of like a task force, um, type of structure, we call it that. Um, you know, we, um, and, you know, the, the, the charter would be somewhat, I guess, the, um, you know, there are, um, Meredith's members that we look, if we look at, uh, maybe contribute to how we do the final hiring process, um, how we give, uh, opportunities, um, you know, how can we examine data, or maybe even create an anonymous survey, we have to, so, um, do that question as well.
So, I think, I think it's a, it's a great idea, I'm wondering if maybe we were able to write down what the charter would be for this committee, so we could see, um, you know, what it would be, have it in writing before us, and then we could go on whether to, we want to, so, I think it's a great idea, but go ahead, let's see it written down.
So Meredith is in agreement to just start some conversation, and we can kind of flip it back and forth between, you know, all of us, and then come up with a final draft?
So I guess the motion would be to table, if you made a motion already, making a motion to table, and the discussion on the diversity committee, uh, for, I write up a charter for us to, uh, look at in the future at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anthony tabled it, uh, so Mike was the initial, Anthony was the second. Discussion about tabling it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. It'll be tabled. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relative routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individual or particular pieces of business on the consent agenda may do so, um, may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of the board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything that anybody would like to pull?
I would, I would like to pull 1305 and 13.12.
Mike, I'm just going to ask you to be more specific, was 1305?
1305?
A, B...
Oh, man. I don't know. I think it's, oh, oh. Uh, yes, oh.
Oh, and then what was the other one? Anybody else?
I would go 1305H and 1314.
1305H and 1314?
15.
Is that it? All right. So I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 13.01 through 1314, except for 1305O, 1305H, and 1312. Bill? Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Georgia? Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 1305H?
I do.
All right, any motion for 1305H?
Motion to appoint the content coordinators as primary agenda.
Second?
Second.
Comments, questions? Go ahead, Meredith.
Um, I just, I have a question, actually, just about what a content coordinator does exactly, are they, um, are they working with the, with Cecilia, um, um, curriculum, or are they just more doing like their whole organizing of it? And I guess maybe it changed, because it, it looked like initially there's some people, some not, areas in the state, but maybe they, they just yet to be appointed, it's good.
So I can answer your second question first. Yes, there are two areas that are not on the agenda that more than one person had applied for, and there was an interview process, and they were too late to make this agenda, so they will be on the next. Um, content coordinators have, have worked with, um, previously the executive director of curriculum and instruction, um, and when that position is filled again, with Cecilia being the assistant superintendent, they will work on curriculum matters. They are the representative group of each of their content areas. So they are the person that brings the issues forward, has the conversation with the central office staff, and then brings it back. So they're the focal point there. Okay?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 1305O? Motion to approve 1305O, need someone?
Motion to appoint elementary principal.
Bill, second?
Second.
Georgia? Comments, questions? Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, my question is, um, so what is the process we went through, uh, in selecting and interviewing for the, uh, elementary school principal, and, uh, and the, and the numbers of applicants, or numbers of people we had interviewed?
Okay, so I'm going to start, and then I'm going to ask Cecilia to just fill in on the numbers, okay? Um, so the posting was done internally and externally, it was on OLOS, it was reached out to, um, SUNY and CUNY schools, um, and we did get a, a process, and there was a committee formed, um, and then we interviewed the process, and I'm going to ask Cecilia to just talk about the number of interviews and, um, the representative, not, maybe not necessarily the number, but the representative group of the people on the committee, so this way she knows more. So, we began with 48 candidates, as you know, um, from there, we screened, uh, the candidates for minimum qualifications first, then looking at experience at the elementary level, dual certification of elementary, as well as administrative certification, prior administrative, uh, experience within first a district, as well as the, within, uh, elementary education. From there, we, we narrowed the pool down to 10 of our most qualified candidates, some of those candidates upon further, uh, review, uh, were candidates that were, that did not emerge as the top candidates. Uh, we had six candidates to initially interview with the committee. We put together in collaboration with both, um, uh, all our three units, our clerical unit, our representative of the school, our administrative unit, representative of elementary principals and district administrators, as well as our BTA within the school. We asked for, uh, participation of our, our PTA, PTOs, uh, from the school. And so we had an interview committee of 13 that met with, uh, our candidates, and then made a recommendation, uh, as a committee, to the superintendent of their two final candidates that were then interviewed by the superintendent and myself. That's how we came to our candidate for the...
But, uh, can you just mention, like, the, the, the candidates, and whether or not it was from like a diverse pool? Because I believe you touched, I believe the candidates were from a diverse pool, if you could touch upon that?
So if you want to speak to, um, both racial and ethnic diversity of our candidates, uh, among our candidate pool, uh, we had, uh, racial and ethnic diversity, um, language diversity, uh, there were five candidates, uh, that were invited for interview, that were racially, ethnically diverse, uh, as well as meeting and exceeding the requirements, and had the experience base that we were looking for within our, uh, the qualities of our elementary principal for South Avenue.
Any other discussion?
So, so in the end, um, how many, so it was 48, and you got down to 10 qualified individuals, and you interviewed six?
We invited, we ended up inviting initially six candidates for interview, we then extended when we had candidates that dropped out, we had five candidates that secured other employment competitively, uh, and then we extended the candidate pool to, to the next three. So we began with the top six, and then extended to, uh, the next three candidates.
So really, out of the, the six candidates that you had picked as the top candidates to interview, of those, you, you interviewed how many?
We interviewed three, as a committee.
Three?
And the principal that we have to present for you this evening is highly qualified, has, uh, an extensive background in terms of the work that's been done, uh, in elementary, uh, administration, uh, has developed, uh, and put forth, uh, support systems of response to intervention, as well as positive behavior interventions and supports, uh, is active in terms of family and community outreach through Twitter and other social media, uh, has a background in both general education, as well as special education administration. And so certainly, uh, what I am with Ms. Porteroni present to you is a highly qualified
And, and I don't have any doubt, you know, that she's, that the person's highly qualified. My, I guess my concern is that maybe we, in our, we didn't have as big of a pool in the end to interview from, I just want, you know, that's, that's my concern.
So...
But we're not, just, I don't think we're voting on the process, Mike, we're voting on the person that's, that they brought to us for that process. So if, if we want to look at the process, I don't think it would be fair to do it through a person, I think that we need to look at the process.
Well, that's why, why, I, I agree, I do agree, but...
And, and that's one of the reasons why I've been saying that if, is, if this board would like to have two candidates sent to them, that's something that we need to discuss and look at, so then we would be making a decision and not taking only the recommendation. And I, and I brought that up in the past, about, uh, looking at two, two candidates that come forth to the board and so forth, and then they interview with the board and so, and such, but the way the process has been set up, and I know that it's been getting looked at, is one person is brought, and that's the recommendation from the superintendent based on the process that it's been.
And I had not, you know, I'm new, so I don't...
No, I understand.
I haven't heard that before. Okay, all right, thank you.
I think, I just want to say that one important part of this whole thing was that, um, I think the important part was the committee number of people that actually interviewed. So, um, I know that there's a lot of people that are interested in the hiring process, not just the board, and not just me, and not just, um, you, but the parents were, you know, we, we made sure to make sure that there was, all the stakeholders were heard from, so that everyone was part of the process, because I, I don't think that that would be important unless, you know, that, that happened. So I, I want to make that pretty clear with 13 or 14 on the committee, it's, you know, hard to manage, but yet you're, you're hearing, everyone on the committee as a representative group is hearing, um, and then seeing the candidates.
So the, so the 13 or 14 on the committee were all part of the actual, the actual interview process?
They interviewed, yes, they were all part of the interview process, and they were part of the recommendation made to me to make the final decision. So they, they brought forward two candidates. But they, they are the ones that asked the questions, they answered, you know, they took notes, they had input into who would be the final candidates.
Okay, and they, and they brought forth the two candidates?
Yes.
And then the selection, the final recommendation come, is from you?
The final recommendation is from me, yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mrs. Kayle, would you like to come up? Were you sweating a little bit? It's all right.
I just want to say that I am honored to be appointed the lead learner of South Avenue Elementary School. There were a few staff members that I were able, I was able to speak with beforehand, and, and it was evident of the pride that they had in the work they do with the kids, and the work that they do with the school, and that's a fantastic environment to become involved in, so I'm very excited about that. I am excited to learn and meet with the South Ave community, the families, I can't wait to work with and learn from the South Ave staff, and I think most importantly, perhaps, uh, meet with and learn from the students of South Avenue Elementary School. So certainly, you know, it is my intent to have some sort of meet and greet opportunities to, um, have the school open beforehand, so people can meet me, and, um, you know, get to know the school, uh, a little better with me, and it, uh, but I, again, I'm, I'm just really... But I, again, I'm just really, I'm very honored for this appointment, so thank you all.
Thank you, and best of luck. 13.12? 13.12, I need a motion for 13.12?
Motion to approve agreement with NCON as our assistant supply name.
Bill, second?
Second.
Georgia? Need you to, Kenny?
So Mike?
Go ahead, Counsel questions?
Well, my question was, the agreement, it doesn't really tell what their scope of service is. It's just, it's an agreement for...
It's a, it's a energy management system. So NCON, we had here at the high school only, and as we did the energy performance contract, part of that energy performance contract was to put in these systems across the district. So the director of facilities could manage the air temperature, the heating, and all of that via a computer and via, you know, this system. This is the first year now, after the year of the energy performance contract, where we just had to do the renewal portion to actually manage the system. So that's what all of that is.
Okay, because there was no, there was no, you know, there was no attachment staying in the, staying in the scope of work.
Okay.
It was just the list of, you know, at each school, there's the list of, the contract for each of the schools and the bus garage of the district that didn't actually list it yet.
My understanding from NCON is that if we provide the service contract and stuff, but I can get you more specific and, and give it to you at the next meeting. I, I wasn't, I didn't see that.
It refers to an attachment which is not there. So like you couldn't tell what the actual services were that we were approving to, something like that. Right.
Oh, it's just a cover sheet, okay.
Right.
So are we going to table this at the next meeting, or are we...
Yeah, I'd like to see the scope of work before we...
Before we approve it.
Tell them the motion.
Make a motion to table 13.12 until next meeting so we can see the actual scope of work.
Does anybody second? Meredith, second? So Mike, motion to table, Meredith, second? Counsel questions?
One question I have is, part of that started July 1st, 2016. I just want to make sure that us not taking any action is not going to cause anything that's already in progress to come to a grinding halt, and if so, what impact does it have on the district?
I think some of them started, I, I, I agree that some of them started different dates. Some started in October coming up, so I don't believe it will be an issue. But since we have a meeting very shortly after now, I can get the information together.
According to July 1st, 2016 was the high school. So that was July 1st to 6:30, 2017. So I'm assuming that since that was sometime in the past, that perhaps where it started, and I just want to make sure that if that is the case, that the implication is of us tabling this.
Well, one option is if you have, I mean, if you have the scope of work here, we took a minute to, to look at it.
I, I have what was attached, so again, I apologize that it's not the scope of work, but I can get that I don't have it with me. So I will resolve it as quickly, and I can have Mr. Sibelli reach out to NCON to get the information that we need to explain that the board had tabled until the next meeting. The high school is not a new addition because of the energy performance contracts. I don't think it would be an issue if we waited another meeting or so to, to agree. But I'll make sure that's not a problem.
Did you answer your question, though?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling 13.12?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed to table. Okay. I need a motion for 13.15? Meredith, a second?
Second.
Georgia? Counsel questions?
I have a question. Maybe you could just give a brief story about, about the services. I, from this contract that started March 15th, I remember there being something on the... I don't know if I can remember, so let me just talk to that.
The consulting agreement is with Angelo Romano, and she was brought in, in March to do, to chair some of the CSC meetings with all of the transition. This is not an additional contract. She didn't use all of her days, so I can't have her come in unless we change the dates and update the contract. So it was for what the orig, what the original amount of what the board had, had appointed, yes. But she still has, I think, I believe, six days left. And for her, and for her to chair some CSC meetings until we finalize the staffing in PPS over the summer is why we just extended her time, but the days stayed the same. Okay?
So will, once you staff at PPS, will it be sufficient personnel to do these? We won't need to have this type of contract in the future?
I'm, I'm not sure how to answer that, so. Until I get the, the people in place. So there may be a little bit of, PPS staffing may look a little bit different, and I want to present that at the next meeting. I'm just trying to get all of the people in order to do that. If you're talking about a consulting agreement, we have in the past used such services, but those kind of things are through either our 611 or 619 grant, so we build that into our federal grants on the pretense that we need, you know, that kind of support. So I don't, I don't want to say to you, we absolutely will never use a consulting agreement because I will be lying because I don't know. I, I'd be, you know, I don't want to commit to that. That will not be the intention. The intention would be to staff it, and it will look a little bit different, but it will function with the people that we have in district.
So if we have a person in district doing that work, their time gets charged to the grant as well?
Some, some of the staff in PPS get charged to the grant, yes. Some of the clerical staff do, some of the administrators do as part of the grant, that's correct.
That saves our, we'll save on our budget that we had allocated for.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's a good thing, so...
So as much as we can put into, that's what the 611 and 619 grants are for, to allocate. So you can't allocate 100% because the grants don't pay 100%.
Okay, so this only goes through the end of September?
This is only the additional six days that were not used last year. That's, it's not additional, it's just to, to use. I, the controller's office would not be happy if I let them...
We need a contract, we need a model. They're on site, they need a contract.
Right, you need to extend the dates, yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, I just want to say one thing to the board. For, since July, we've been working hard, and I just want to let you know that I appreciate you guys following through on everything. And we've, we're tackling things little by little. I know it seems like, you know, we're not getting anywhere, but we're making progress. And so I just want to commend you guys on all the hard work that all you're doing. All right? With that said, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Anthony?
Second.
Kenny, second? Any discussions? Is there discussion?
Thank you for the vote. We have an hour and 40 minutes left.
No.
No, we don't.
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.